All right, I think we're all set there.
Okay, thank you. Welcome to the virtual May budget work session. It is Tuesday, May 18th, 2021, and it is 11:01. May have a roll call, please.
President.
President.
Commissioner Janice Duckett.
Here.
Commissioner Sarah Franklin.
Here.
Dave Williams, town clerk, all present.
You're standing for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, the first order of business is Resolution 2021-15 CPJ proposal approval. Go on record at this time that this was discussed at the previous town meeting and no one had a problem with us voting on this today at a work session. So it is up for a vote.
Did you want to have the clerk read it, Mayor?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that. Dave, if you would.
All right, yes, ma'am. The town of Upper Marlboro Resolution 2021-15 session. Ah. Session should be extra work session. So noted. Dated May 18th, 2020. A resolution of the Board Town of Commissioners of the Town of Upper Marlboro to approve a proposal from Charles P. Johnson and Associates Incorporated to prepare a meets and bounds survey and map exhibit for Phase Two and Three of the town's annexation plan.
Do I have any questions or comments at this time? Do I have a motion to approve?
Yeah, there may be some background noise while I make this, but I motion that we approve Resolution 2021-15. Approving the proposal from Charles P. Johnson and Associates to put air meets and bounds survey and map.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All ayes, so noted.
Thank you.
So we'll get this signed by the mayor since we have the verbal, but then there's not a huge pressure to get it signed because we have the verbal vote. So the mayor will sign it today, we'll get it off, and then whenever commissioners have time to sign. So, thank you, and I'll get everything, we can get this going today.
Thank you, Kyle.
All right, let me change my screen. Yes, you can see the budget, right?
Now on to everyone's favorite topic these days, the budget. Will, you want to walk us through this right now?
Yes. Again, good morning, everyone, I apologize. I'm in my vehicle, it's election day, and I'm a poll worker and a watcher as well, so. But talking about the FY 2022 budget, like the mayor said, it's definitely been some things that we've been discussing over the past two or three months. Just looking at the revenue side and expense side, there isn't much that has changed from the previous discussions that we had at the town meeting in or work session. We did have to add some things, so in the first area, if you're looking at the budget, draft budget and the revenue section for fines, licenses, permits, you'll see a line item at 83 for red light cameras. So myself and Kyle discussed that we should include that red light camera line item for particular revenue that may come in because of the annexation that may be taking place in a very near future. So those other numbers, as far as franchise fee and business license and parking fines and penalties, those numbers have not changed a great deal. I did decrease a little bit of $2,000 because we had to add an expense line item for matching monies of the grant of $30,000. So I had to pull some of that money from somewhere, so that the area of fines, licenses and permits and also taxes was that I deducted small amounts from to come up with that $30,000. Intergovernmental did not change as far as those projected revenues. I have not received any updated information for highway user fee revenue. So so far, still the amount is still a little bit over $27,000. Going down to taxes again, those numbers haven't changed a lot. More so, they've just been decreased a little bit to accommodate for the project matching monies for the grant. Going down to general government, you'll see that administrative salaries and wages currently right now, they're at a little bit over 200, excuse me, a little bit over 248,000, pending further discussion and a review with department heads and the Board of Commissioners. Payroll, taxes and deductions, those numbers have not changed, and professional service has not changed as well. You'll see further down to the bottom, we still have a planning firm line item, expense line item there for any potential expenses that might come about with, I believe, CP Johnson, one of those things that we just talked about. So we're gonna keep that there for the time being. Operating expenses for the general government has not changed either. Moving to public safety, similar to general government, and this will be similar to public works as well, those salaries and wages, we condensed everybody, so all of the employees or vacancies in there, we just kind of condensed it also, and we could see the final number. That number also includes an expense for overtime as well. Not much overtime, I think each department, as far as public works and public safety, has about $2,500 to $5,000 of projected expenses for overtime. So that number is lumped into the salaries and wages as well. What I did do was I hit some, I increased slightly vehicle maintenance. I think I did that by about $500 or so, so not much. I did that on both public safety and public works as well. And I'm trying to think if there's any other major things that out that has changed, which I believe there isn't any, honestly. What I do want to go over is the transfer to other funds. So what we are looking at transfer to other funds is monies that are going to be some form of dispersments that go out. So typically, either we'll transfer our monies collected for whether it's taxes or fines, licenses, permit fees. We'll transfer those monies to a separate account so that we can disperse those monies for whatever project that it's for. So the first item is grants. So we are earmarked to receive about two. Actually, maybe more than that now, I apologize, let me look at my other sheet. So we're earmarked to receive about $187,000 in grants. And that encompasses a state street skate for 20,000, state aid for 17,000, community open space for 100,000, and an FIP grant or facade improvement for 50,000. All of that totals up to about $187,000. So those are monies that's going to come in from, whether it's the state or in or the county for restricted use or specific projects. So that, we're not counting that as revenue, and we're also not going to count that as expense. However, there is a $30,000, as I mentioned, matching expense that has to go or be combined with the playground grant, I believe it is, the playground grant for $100,000. And that's why you'll see $30,000 there, $30,000 at the grants line item, because that's an expense on the town. Moving down with the ARP money, we're scheduled to get in. I apologize, at the top of my head, I can't remember, I want to say it's about $252,000 for the first round of deposit. So we do have that or preparing ourselves to receive those monies within FY 2022. So we do have a line item there. So again, that's not anything as far as our operating money, but we do want to make sure that we have a separate fund to house those monies when they come in. Committee expenses, we don't have, I don't have specific events in the fund for committee expenses. However, we do know that there are some things that's going to happen, whether it's the Halloween event, whether it's a Town of Upper Marlboro event that they put on, or Marlboro Day, maybe it's something in Black History Month. So but all of that encompasses right now, the general fund, the operating fund, is scheduled to transfer over $17,750 to the committees fund so that they can use those expenses or those revenues, those revenues to purchase the supplies or to have a certain event to get the permit that they need to block off the street or whatever the case may be. So that's where that $17,000 is coming from, that's going to be a transfer from the general operating account. The replenishment reserve transfer. So initially, it started at, started out at 19,000, now it's down to 16,000 with some things that we had to do. I'm hoping that we don't decrease that amount. I'm actually, I hope we can get at least, at least maybe get it up to $20,000, $25,000 that will replenish the reserve fund. And what that is, of course, over the years, we're taking money from the reserve fund and from those long-term and or short-term investments to use for capital projects or for infrastructure improvements, and we want to try to find a way to replenish that. So I think by having a strategic plan to say, hey, we're actually going to try and attempt to put money back into it, is a good start for the Town of Upper Marlboro. So those monies, it's going to be a transfer from the operating account, which is generating account. At the end of the year, hopefully, we end with a surplus of 16,000 or in the black of 16,000, and we can transfer that over to the, sorry, to the, to the reserve, back into the reserve fund. And at capital improvement projects, this is something Kyle's been going over with for some time now. So we have talked about several amounts of capital improvement projects that we think are priority for this fiscal year that's approaching and that we feasibly are able to complete as well. So the general account or operating account will transfer 60, is planned to transfer $66,000 to the capital improvement fund for specific projects that has been discussed over the last few months in our meetings. So right now, the town is looking at a, an operating budget of $1,665,081. Again, we're going to end the year hopefully net neutral, pending the expenses align and all and the revenues align as well. And that is the FY 22 budget, draft budget for right now, pending some other potential other changes in certain areas. And so I have, unless there's any questions on this budget.
Excuse me, at this time, does anyone have any questions for Will?
I had a quick clarification, Mayor, about the playground. So the playground, we'll mention, is still Phase One. It was included in the FY 21 budget, and you'll see how we've changed stuff here when we go to the budget amendments. But because it's not going to be completed FY 21, we moved Phase One's, the remaining half of Phase One's project over to FY 22, that's the $100,000 grant we're going to get, and then the $30,000 town match for that grant. So that's where those figures are coming from. Phase Two is not, Phase Two playground, I know, and we announced, we just received, that's not included in this budget, FY 22 budget at this time because the board hasn't had a chance to discuss the project and make any decisions. So that'll probably be coming down in the fall time as a budget adjustment or amendment to add that project. And I just want to clarify that with the board.
Thank you.
And I'll just add, we will be doing, or having a budget presentation for the board and the constituents of the Town of Upper Marlboro. I think we're going to do that at the June town meeting as well. So we're going to do some form of a PowerPoint presentation for everyone to visually see it as well.
And that's the same time we'll be voting on it, Will?
I believe so, Kyle, correct me if wrong, but I'm pretty sure I believe so.
Correct, yeah. And another, Will mentioned the red light funding. As you can see, that number zeroed out, we just put that in there. So as we start getting money, it just kind of starts getting dumped into a line item, and we're not scrambling. So that's why it's zeroed out, because we have no idea, we don't want a budget for it. But pretty much anything we make off that that we can use will go to pit out vehicles and whatnot. But that's why that's zeroed out.
So as that comes in, then that money can go into the town vehicle and road improvement?
Exactly, but right now, it's not contributing to the budget at all because we didn't want to shoot ourselves in the foot like we had in the past, even though we're fairly certain it will move through, especially with the annexation. We get the final documents for annexation, so.
Okay.
Any other questions at this time?
Let me swap over. I do have another point of discussion, the salary chart, Mayor, that's included in the budget ordinance, obviously, since these are figures, and Commissioner Franklin brought it up, we can discuss now, and then we'll also be discussing, that's obviously next week as well. But since we have a little bit of time and we're kind of moving pretty quickly through the items, I just have on here what Mr. Morgan suggesting for this upcoming year with with cost of living, but I'll let Will kind of break it out.
Yeah, so. Okay, so, within the personnel ordinance that was put into place in May-June of 2020, the language inside of that ordinance says that the town should amend or adjust or approve that ordinance annually, and it should base the chart off of the GS salary pay schedule on a year-to-year basis. So in F, in this calendar year, this calendar, so that, that table goes off of a calendar year, not a fiscal year. So for 2021, there was a cost of living increase in the Maryland, DC, Washington, Arlington area of 1%. So the cost of living increase was 1%. So it would have been nice to just be able to take their table and plug it into our ordinance. I think maybe in the future, we can do that or should do that. But right now, our table, what I did was, the step one is the base salaries for each position or each pay grade. So I increased the step one at 1% based off of what the GS table said that that was the increase for that for the year. So I increased, so if you'll see, last year, the step one was at, pay grade one, step one was at 32,000. And this, what I'm proposing, or what we're proposing, is that pay grade one, step one, be at $32,320, which is a 1% increase from a year ago. Now, what I did moving forward from steps one or from step two through 10 was I did a 3% increase. The reason I did a 3% increase, because that's what I'm proposing, that the Board of Commissioners would approve within our new FY 22 budget for a cost of living increase for the employees, because we did not provide a cost of living increase in the prior year. So I put a 3% increase within the budget, within those budget numbers for salaries and wages. So again, step one had a 1% increase, and steps two through 10 were 3% increases from basing it off of that, the step one's numbers. And I hope I explain that right for everyone to understand. But that's how it went, step one was for a 1% increase, steps two through 10 were 3% increases across the board.
So Will, did we have feedback from Insurity as to whether this is comparative rates for these types of jobs? I mean, like, I just can't believe we would be paying anyone, you know, $15 an hour and expecting them to live on that, I just, it's blowing my mind, sorry.
Now, you're right, so we did ask Insurity to provide us some assistance. We have not received that back from Insurity yet. So we've asked, and myself and Kyle's asked that once or twice, we just haven't received it yet. I do know, I think we're going to go into another, a deeper conversation within that, not, maybe, maybe the next meeting, but I'll make sure I reach out to them again and try and push them on that, to make sure they get that to us. What I will say is that pay grade one, step one on the GS salary schedule is less than 32,000 or 32,320. Their pay grade one, step one is roughly about 27,000. And it goes, their pay grades go up to pay grades 10, I believe. I think it goes out to steps 10 and or 12. So I agree with what you, what you just stated. But I will say that I don't, maybe the GS table, maybe they're, they're looking at more careers and or positions that they're accounting for compared to what we're looking at. But their table was. Right. So as far, but as far as comparisons, I don't have, well, we do have a comparison for public safety, but I don't have comparisons for administration and or public works for the current departments that we currently have here.
I'm working with MML, they have a compensation system that we signed up for $40 a month. I just signed up for it last week, I'm waiting to get some sort of tutorial so I can get with Will on that. But then what we also do, and we're looking at the, kind of on the side, because I know, just as a backup for when Insurity gets back, I'm just looking at the different positions put out on MML's website for different jobs out there. So there's a lot of police officers and stuff, and I'm trying to just kind of break it out comparably. Now, it's different because you have the very large municipalities, and you have the small, but it's kind of across the board, like starting experience, police officer is pretty standard, and then the crew member or other places call them laborers, which I don't like, are another starting. So we'll have something together, and we're definitely getting, I have it on the work session in general. We're going to go through the agenda items for the work session later on this PowerPoint. But I have that as an actual discussion item for next Tuesday's meeting. But Will, just because we have pay grade one, step one doesn't necessarily mean we have to hire people at that pay grade, or we can hire them at a higher step and start them off, and then they start. There's nothing says we have to hire them at step one, right?
Right, no, well, the only, that says that, I know ordinance, but for a position specifically a crew member, it does say that they should be at pay grade, in between pay grades one and two. I think that's what it says within the ordinance. So yes, we don't have to hire them at pay grade one, that one, we can hire them at pay grade one, step five, if we like to, or we can hire them at pay grade two, step one. So you're right, it doesn't necessarily say we have to hire them at that step. It just says that they should be in that ballpark range of pay, of those two pay, of those pay grades.
I have a question, can, so I've never worked government. So can you tell me about the pay grade and then the step? If we were looking at the pay grade, is it based on like experience, skill set? And the step one, can you explain that for me?
Sorry, let me get that question again. So are you asking, is, somebody, like, do we place them off of experience on what pay grade or step that they should, they should be at?
Right, is, is that how this is determined, the pay grade or the step? Years of experience, skill set?
Well, and let me back up, because I think, I think I misspoke, actually, I'll take it back. So step pay grade, step one, that column of step one is actually the base rate for a position. So technically, we probably should start an employee that's, that's, that's coming in. We probably should, so I'm not sure if you lost me. We probably should start an employee at the base rate, which is the step, step one, probably should, most certainly. What I think that we might need to look at is making sure that everyone's in the right pay grade. So if they're needing to be in pay grade one, or if they should be in pay grade two, then yes. Now, as far as the experience, I do think that we should be able to, or the board should be able to say that, okay, this position of a crew member is in, is supposed to be in pay grade two, then based off of their work experience or where they're coming from, their certifications, then yeah, maybe they shouldn't be at the base rate of pay grade two, step one, maybe they should be at pay grade two, step five. Now, the ordinance does not spell that out at all, that's not what the ordinance spells out. So I mean, could there be more detail within the ordinance? I believe so, but it doesn't say how we should, I guess, rank those individuals or candidates that we're trying to hire.
Yeah, I think that would be a great move. Is that something that Insurity would help us with? Because, you know, then we at least have some type of established guidelines in order to help us determine where they should fall.
There is something, so I pulled up the personnel ordinance. So as you guys can see, these are the pay grades for the different positions. So like, the lowest, obviously, is like police clerk or crew members are one of the three. But you can see as they go up, so we have different, so like, they can get, we're proposing now, we'll discuss next week, like public works, to get promoted to senior crew members, which is the next pay grade and move people up. And then this ordinance also lists the steps for bumping people up. It talks about cost of living. Here we go, steps one through to three. So it's pretty much says that as you move through that, like every year, once we establish you at a step rate, you get bumped at like every year of service, you go up another pay rate every time. So it's kind of spelled it out here in the section.
I think every year, Kyle, you're right, but every year of service, you go up a step.
Yeah, not a pay grade.
Right.
But also.
Or evaluates your work to be satisfactory or above satisfactory, then I think that it gives them the discretion to, to say that this employee should not go up a step, they should go up a pay grade, which would bump them down to one pay grade, or bump, some form of bump them up for pay grade. But if they were at, and let me back, I apologize for kind of talking, rambling on, but if somebody, if myself was at pay grade three, step five, and you said, Will, your work is satisfactory, we're going to move you up a pay grade. So now I will be at pay grade four, step four. So you would go up a pay grade but down a step, still be an increase, but that's, that's how the ordinance reads that it should be, as, as you evaluate an employee.
I think what Commissioner Duckett was asking was kind of like, say, I've been a public, I, I've worked in public works for 20 years, and I come in, you know, I shouldn't be hired at step one. Or, or I'm not going to come in, I'm not going to take this job if I have the experience and I'm not being compensated for it. Is that right, Janice?
Oh, yeah. Yes, that's right. And then also, with that, Sarah, I also wanted to know, so have we established like performance reviews? I mean, I'm sure that this is something that Insurity would be doing with us, but, I mean, because in order to, you know, to properly assess the staff, like, do we have that in place yet? Performance reviews?
We were working with Insurity, that was on their agenda to do, but I think we've kind of overwhelmed them with all the other items. So that kind of got pushed back. So we're definitely going to do some sort of basic reviews this year before the next fiscal year, for next year, setting some goals and whatnot. But as of right now, the comprehensive part where we were kind of hoping to be at, kind of got pushed back a bit with some of the other HR items that they've been, they've been working on.
Is it, is it possible? I mean, I know, I know, it's, it's so important to have all of these aspects of HR for, from insurities and, and their assistance, but is there something, I think that, especially in, in the workforce, I mean, you're going to have to have some performance reviews, I think that's going to help to filter out, you know, any mis, confusion in terms of pay and understanding where individuals are so that we don't have, you know, disgruntled, let's just say, you know, disgruntled employees because they don't know where they are or what's going on. So is there a way that possibly that we could like reassess like what we've given them to assistance with? And maybe put this maybe somewhere on the top of their agenda to work with? Because I think in order to move forward in terms of allocating proper pay, they're going to need to know what their performance has been. I mean, that just works both ways, it's going to help overall.
Right. I do think that at this point right now, Insurity Right. I do think that at this point right now, um, Insurity. Can take on. Sorry, I, I do think at this point, Insurity might be able to take on some, a task as far as helping us. Uh, or getting us through those waters to, to have a, uh, employee review. Like Kyle said, we kind of, we threw pretty much the entire court at them, uh, when they first came on, um, whether it's with the. Assistance with the hiring, assistance with, uh, uh, benefits and a policy and things like that. To whereas, I mean, tho- most of those things are kind of, uh, i- in the phase or already kind of at its completion point, to whereas we can. Put position them with some other tasks to do, uh, but you're, you are right, Commissioner, um, that, that is a very important. Um, for us to have, as for us to, to have an accurate evaluation, and so that the employee knows where they stand as well. And what they need to improve on, or what they're good at or whatnot, so I agree.
Yeah, hopefully, I mean, we could just, you talk to them, I just think it's just something that we should just make sure that we get. Um, on the top, uh, you know, so that we can make sure that all employees are, are satisfied, we're all satisfied, we know where we are. We know what we're doing, and we can just move forward. So the sooner I think that they know that we need some assistance with that, the better.
I think in the meantime, um, I can make sure, we'll make sure we reach out to Insurity today, um, but talk to all of our, uh, department heads. To see if, uh, we can put something together, uh, so that they can, um, a- and I guess either. I don't know if they need to necessarily speak with their, uh, uh, and members within their, uh, their department, but at least so when we have the discussion next week. You all, the board of commissioners as well, can have some inform- information to kind of revert back to as well, what from the department is, so. Uh, we, we most certainly probably can set, set up a meeting, at least internally with us, and possibly see how we can bring in Insurity on that, uh. So we can try to get some answers, uh, very in the near future, like for next.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, and let me ask you, because I think each department, the department heads can pretty much put together.
Yeah.
A lit- that, yeah, and then that way we'll just help them, you know, move this process right on along.
Brother Riker, there was a, uh, a standard review, annual review that was done. Since I started working here, every March to April. Um, it was a form that it, it was probably inadequate, needs to be improved upon. Uh, but there was something in existence, uh, uh, up till two thousand eighteen, and then that was changed to a. A much more, um. A, a form that was kind of narrow in the review process, but it was, uh. Specified goals, so the review was tied with the goals, uh. Pledge or commitment or what have you, and that seemed to be very different than the annual review. Just wanted to put that out there, that I, I, I didn't find the two thousand eighteen review process, uh. Uh, very employee friendly, it just seemed very intimidating to me. I did not care for that process of setting goals for the year ahead along with the review. Uh, deadline dates and that sort of thing, um, because we were constantly in a flex of change. Personnel and whatnot, and commissioners, et cetera. So, uh, there is a form, I just want to put that out there, that had been done and had been sort of actually missed, uh, in recent years.
And Dave's right, we do have a form, we just, we're not, we haven't been, since I've been here, we haven't been consistent. On, uh, perf- uh, those employee evaluations, whether it's annually, quarterly, semi-annually. As far as administration changes, we haven't been consistent on completing those, but Dave is correct.
Yeah, some mayors changed, so that's why we're trying to get it standardized, so that they weren't changing.
Right.
Use the old form, um, for this year, and then we work with Insurity on the, um.
Well, the thing is, I don't know, Kyle, cause I think you should probably take a look to re- reevaluate that, as simply because Mr. Dave just stated that. It was a bit intimidating, I don't think.
The for- the form before.
Okay, okay, cause the same, the one that you mentioned, I don't think that we should be using, because typically. Um, how performance reviews are assessed, which I'm sure you all know, and. Is based on your past performance, not goals for the future necessarily. Yes, some ideas of some things that you want to do, but not, not anything that's actually gonna pressure a person into a, uh, feeling intimidated. As such, if they don't actually reach those goals, so those should be something, those goals should be something that inspires. The, uh, employee to bring, to do better, to do more, to grow, not just something to. To, to hold over their head, to say, if you don't meet this, then we have a reason to get rid of you, so, um, yeah, I, I think that was. Great feedback, Mr. Williams, for that, I think we all need to know that.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I agree with Janice too, I think if you ha- set goals, it would be kind of like, so. Hey, Sarah, I've noticed that your paperwork is disorganized and messy, and can you improve that for next year? Okay, next year, now you say, hey, your paperwork's still disorganized and messy, and that's a goal I didn't meet, right? Um, instead of, you know, what are your dreams for this year? Let's evaluate you on whether you've achieved, so. I think that makes sense.
Um, Will, could we send the old form, the pre-two thousand eighteen form that we had standard to Insurity? Have them take a quick look at it today, tomorrow, and we can get that out to department heads? And what we could do in the meantime as well, even though we're approving the budget, we could approve like a set amount, um. For salaries, that's not super exact, which gives us some flexibility, so as the evaluation comes back, the board has a bit more. Time to, um, enact actual pay rates for employees after we get that feedback, um, that way they can still pass the budget. Uh, the second week of June, but maybe at the work session, we're nailing down the exact pay rates per employee. Based off performance, just to give us a bit more flexibility.
Yeah, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but some of the, what Janice and I have said about the personnel ordinance and the salaries is that. There's a concern that the base rate is, you know, someone's gotta go out and get a second job, and then they're not focused on us. And then there's a concern that we're not compensating people for their experience and skill set, which doesn't bring in. People with experience and skill sets, um, I think that, did that summarize our concerns?
Yes, um, I also think that, um, and thank you, Sarah, I also, have we, have we. Have department heads have a chance to meet with Insurity yet? Because I think, I mean, I don't want to put the horse before the carriage, and, and we're doing things, I, I think, has that been scheduled yet?
No.
Yeah, that needs to happen.
So we, we, that was going, well, we always have intentions, uh, on scheduling that, we just haven't had, had that meeting yet. I mean, one of the things that we were gonna talk about, uh, with Insurity, with the department is, when we brought them in, was about salaries, was about. Employee evaluation, was about training and supervision, training and vision and management, those types of things. And we haven't had long conversations about that yet, because of some of the other tasks that we were kind of making sure that we got done before the fiscal year, so. Yes, that most certainly it does need to happen, I agree, because that's one of the reasons why we didn't schedule yet.
When can we get that on the schedule?
As soon as possible, whenever we schedule it, we, whenever we, whenever we need to, whenever we can schedule it, I, I don't, we don't mind putting it on there. We were just handling so many other things at, at that point.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just saying, like, it, it, for planning sake, you know, we have to, you know, and I know you all are doing a lot of things, but I'm just saying. For planning sake, it has to be on the schedule, so that at least, um, everybody's aware and that department head, department heads will have an opportunity. To share their thoughts and concerns and receive feedback. I mean, that's what we have Insurity for, so, I, I, I'm just saying, how soon can we get something on the schedule? For the department heads to meet with Insurity. Uh, all this, all this relates, of course, with the pay increase, the step, performance, everything.
Could that happen like, at the third week in June, so that we're past the budget? Process, but maybe the personnel ordinance is still being discussed, is that?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna suggest sometime after the June town meeting, so either late that week or the following week. Um, that way, the, like you said, the personnel ordinance is done, we have that done, they can discuss that, um, and then.
Budget ordinance, not personnel, so.
I'm sorry, the what?
Budget ordinance, not personnel ordinance, because the salaries are in the personnel ordinance.
Yes, we want to push off the personnel, because right now we have it scheduled to be approved in June, um.
Okay, well.
Dated rates, and then.
Well, we do have to approve it in June.
Yeah, so we need the, that schedule with the rates and those concerns addressed first. So that we can approve them, and then the meetings with the department heads would come after that meeting.
Before it's approved. Before.
I guess it all has to be approved, because the pay chart is part of the budget ordinance, so it has to be approved. Um, so that has to be done first, because. I'm definitely not comfortable approving the pay chart where it is right now.
Well, it sounds like an easy fix to the pay chart would be to remove pay grade one, that line, and then move it up. So that we start at, if pay grade step two would be pay grade step one, is that kind of what we're looking at? If that makes sense, what I'm saying? Uh, let me pull back up, I'm sorry, I got.
Mine isn't complete or something, I don't know.
Hold up, I'm swapping the screen now. Here we go.
Okay.
So you're saying have nine steps instead of ten?
Uh, no, we'd have, uh, eight steps still, um, or we'd go down to seven steps. We'd remove pay grade one.
You mean pay grade scales?
Oh.
Steps.
Okay.
That pick, is the pay grade one is obviously our lowest one, so that the lowest rate for the town would be pay grade. That it would be, it would be pay grade two, step one, but if we're, if that makes sense.
That gets, that gets that first step, like, just right below a living wage, but close enough.
Yeah.
Probably.
Yeah, um, so without, that way we're still pulling from the, the, the federal pay chart, like the ordinance is kind of built. We're not kind of reinventing the wheel and shifting everything over, but like Will mentioned, there is a line. I, or I guess as Will mentioned, there's a lot, there's like lines below our pay grade step one. Right, Will? So there's like, there's pay grade zero, step one at twenty-seven thousand. So which we don't have that line from the federal rate.
Oh, right, right, yes.
So our, ours is already, it's just taking certain, we kind of picked what line we want to take, so our pay grade one is technically their pay grade, I guess, too, Will?
Yeah, it might be there, technically it might be their pay grade like three, honestly, but, um, but yes. There, and I'm gonna try and see if I can pull it up real fast, but you're correct, our pay grade is a little bit down the line compared to what their pay grade starts.
Yeah.
Either.
Yeah, I feel like that gets, that would address my concern of, you know, people having to have multiple jobs and being, you know.
Yeah.
Tired and distracted.
That part of this, and we can either add, I don't know if, Will, if there's a, a pay grade nine on the federal chart we could add, which obviously would push it up a bit. Um, but we could adjust the pay rates based, well, we wouldn't have to do too much, they're pretty, pretty much still be in line.
Is anyone we currently employ close to maxing out?
Uh, close to.
Maxing out, or is that a question we have to ask later?
Yes, oh, but yes, well, yes.
Okay, so, well, um, yeah, so we may need to add another one, but we can talk about that in closed session, I guess, right?
Yes, close or open, you can discuss that part of it, and open.
I don't, I don't know if it's adding another step or pay grade, it might be, correct me if I'm wrong. It might be changing the language within, next to a person's or a person's position, pay grade. So everybody's in, uh, three pay grades, so if you're a crew member, you're from one to three, if you're a town administrator, you're from six. Uh, five to eight, so there is positions or could be positions that. They might be at, if, if I'm a person, as, say my pay grade is supposed to be two to five. I might be at, my salary might say I'm at pay grade five and step ten, meaning. There's no other rule, technically based on orders, there's no room for me to kind of advance, unless it's a cost of living increase. Uh, uh, based off of my, uh, the service that I provide, so the only way for that to happen, based off the ordinance. Is for the person that positions pay grade to have a, to have a diff- additional pay grade within that position, if you get what I'm saying. So if somebody says from two to five, they need to be bumped up from like two to six or three to six, in order from them to get. Increases based off of their performance.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's a problem.
Cause I know, um, when the board discussed this initially, there was discussion about like. If people are coming with years of experience, if they're coming in with different college degrees or certifications, how that's built in. And I think there was some issues actually putting that type of thing into paper, is that right, Will? Or I'm trying to remember, because Commissioner Bernard Leclerc kind of took the lead on how this was written, um.
I'm, I'm sorry, Kyle, I kind of missed what you were talking about, um, Commissioner Bernard Leclerc definitely took the lead on this one. So I'm not really familiar as far as all of his thinking in the military, or sorry, but that thinking behind it, um. So I didn't really hear what you said, but I'm trying to pull up the GS table, honestly.
So, so let me, let me help, let me help in, interject something here. So what he did was, and I work for the federal government, so that's how I know. A, a pace, a pay grade one, step one is in the actual federal guideline. It actually goes from pay grade one to fifteen, but the steps are actually one to ten. So you can be a step fifteen, I mean, you can be a pay grade fifteen, step ten. How it normally works, just to say for a crew leader, a crew leader's position is a pay grade four. Okay, let's use four as an example, the person comes in as, as a four, say step two. Well, they stay in that pay grade until they leave or get a promotion. So the way the federal government works, you can come in as a pay grade three, six, seven, ten, or whatever. It just depends on your experience, and you stay in that grade until you max out. The only way you get a promotion in a different pay grade is you're applying for another position. So whatever the lowest person on the pay grade is for, um, let's say, um, just say, uh, we had a part-time clerk. That only worked twenty hours, whatever part-time clerk could get the pay grade one, step one salary, because they're part-time. But then a regular clerk may come in as a pay grade three, step one. But if they stayed here ten years, they would be at pay grade three, step ten. And if they wanted to go to another clerk's position or a higher position, then they would go up to another classification, which is different. So each pay grade is a different classification of job.
But that's not, but she, that's not how our ordinance reads.
Uh, but no, I'm just, I'm, I'm telling you how the federal government does it, that's, that's how the federal government is, that pay grade is a classification for. A specific job, so each job has different grades, and you stay in those grades all the way up to step ten. Unless you apply and get another position still in that same organization, so let's just say if. Um, a, uh, a laborer, which is probably the lowest, I don't know, but say that's, say it's a laborer, crew chief and supervisor. Well, the laborer comes in at the lowest, and if they felt that they deserved a raise, they would apply for the next position, which would be crew leader, which they would go up in pay grade. But they would be comparable to their pay grade and their step, so they wouldn't go from, uh, pay grade three, step. Seven to pay grade four, step seven, they would have to go back so that they're equal. Um, they don't go ahead, they go back to at least where they are with the pay increase, but it's not all the way to the same step level. In some instances, you go, if you go up a grade, you go all the way back to step one. And start over, but you're, if you notice, you're at a higher salary.
Right.
At, at the next grade, so that's how the government does it, it's just that we're not. The ordinance is not lined up with how the chart is actually written, and that's the confusion. I think he started it, but he didn't finish it, so the ordinance doesn't read the way that a pay scale, um. Is lined up in a federal government's situation. And I guess the change of ordinance or the charter, it would be confusing, or ordinance would be too confusing, so. How it's set up looks fine, the way it's laid out is where the error is.
So achieving, right, it does, so it goes up to pay grade fifteen, but, uh, great, uh, pay grade. So achieving track, it does, so it goes up to pay grade fifteen, but, uh, great, uh, pay grade one, step one is twenty five thousand. Uh, you don't get to, uh, pay grade three, step one is thirty one thousand five hundred. And then the next step is thirty five thousand, so we're roughly around pay grade, our step, pay grade one, step one is roughly there, pay grade three, step one. Um, but again, I agree with Chief, like I think the chart is kind of some form of fine, I don't think that the schematics of how it's supposed to work is lined out right.
Oh. Well, thank you for explaining that.
Are we making this, or, or was this made more complicated than it needs to be, is my, like, like. I, I get that we want to have some normalcy in. Paid in people and people to have some expectations about where they can go. But is this way of doing it way more complicated than it needs to be? It's my question, like, is there a simpler?
Very good question. Very good.
I'm not sure how other municipalities are, this is the first, so this is when it was introduced, it was kind of foreign to me, I've never seen this in a. It, it's federal, like Chief said, it's like we adapted the federal, um. Normally, I guess you get hired at a rate and then you just kind of get cost of living moving forward unless you get a new position, um.
Right.
But I really haven't seen that in any other municipalities, others may have larger ones, I'm sure, like Bowie, Laurel, bring up, they probably have some sort of. Something like that similar, um, with steps, but the smaller ones are size. Yeah, I know where it came from, where, because pretty much beforehand, we were making up salary figures for positions.
Right.
Um, and so that was something that he saw as a concern is why this was introduced.
Is it, is it possible, I mean, because I, I'm totally with Sarah on that. Um. Is it possible, I mean, were you able to connect with, I mean, because I know he put, he, I mean, there, there was some work put into this, but at the same time, it may not be just the best fit for us. So I'm wondering, have we been able to, or have you been able to reach out to like the other municipalities to find out how their. Pay structure is, um, that are comparable to, um, our. We're pretty small, but comparable to our municipality, or at least just an idea, even if they're a little bit bigger, just a little bit. Um, to see what that looks like, I think that would be really helpful. Because. If we're not federal and he's basing this on federal or how it's set up, then I think it's just going to be even, it's just going to continue to be a little confusing. Especially considering.
I was gonna say, help clarify, some of the, some of the, some of the agencies do have something similar. However, if you're looking at this, this chart is set up based on a. Step process, meaning the federal government generally gives employees a step every year. They may or may not get a cost of living every year. And so that's what, that's one of the things that the town has to decide, what are we doing, and you said in, in the past, people didn't get steps, they got colas. So in this format. And some of the formats I've seen, especially in the police departments, this step process does go this way. However, if the performance is actually great, the person gets the step. Now, the town has the revenue, they also give a cost of living. Because that employee did their job, they get the step. The cost of living is just added bonus money, so to speak, they don't call it bonuses, they call it cost of living. And they're generally, like you said, anywhere between one percent to three percent. Depending on how much money you bring in and depending on how much money you have to spend per year. But this chart, how it's set up is an accurate chart, you just need to revise the ordinance to line up with it. So the chart is fine, the ordinance, which is what needs to be adjusted, because you could have an employee come in. Um, and stay ten years, but what happens after their tenth year, they just get cost of livings unless they apply for a higher position. So this chart is fine. It's just how we re, you know, you guys reword the ordinance to match how the chart is actually structured.
And Chief, in the federal level, like we have, we have ranges, so like. Uh, town administrators, pay rate, pay grade six to eight. But normally in the feds, that job is assigned one pay grade, right?
No, 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 it's, no, it's, there is a pay range, they will give you a pay range in the federal government system too, but it's based on your experience. So if somebody comes in at a seat, so a senior level position person. Who's already a senior level, say a fourteen, if they go to a fifteen, they're not going to go to a fifteen step one. Cause you're almost at the top of the pay, you're going to come in at, if you're a fifteen step seven, you might come in, I mean, a fourteen step seven, you might come in as a fifteen step six. You're not going all the way back, the lower classifications is generally when you go back to the beginning, because if not, you'll max out of the chart. If that makes sense.
So my, so my thought is, instead of like having like Temish other pay grades six through eight, should we just assign one pay grade? Like.
Yeah, so, so let's use pay grade five, for example, pay grade five is fifty five hundred. When you put that in a salary chart, you could say, I'm going to do between pay grade five step one and pay grade five step three, so the range would be fifty five hundred. Two fifty three, five thirty, that would be the pay range for somebody with experience. Now, somebody who doesn't have experience, they will come in at the fifty five hundred.
Exactly, yeah, so that's, that's the easy way, but I guess the feds, they don't set anything criteria like it's. Experience, that's kind of depending on the hiring person.
No, no, you, it is based on your experience, if you live in a federal, a federal job does have a range, it has a salary range, um, and it's generally. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but it's generally the first one to three or four steps is the range that they will, um. Give the person. And that's just the same, like, if you look at any of the municipalities, when they do a range, even though they have a step chart, they're only given within the first one to three ranges. Um, on that particular job, but if it's a higher classification job, then you're going down, I mean, you're going up in the pay grades, so we only stopped at eight, like I said, they go all the way up to sixteen.
Yeah, so our, like, so a, a police clerk would come in at pay grade, if we're eliminating pay grade. Or changing pay grade two to pay grade one, so they come in at pay grade one, and then. Depending on their level of experience, say they have lots of experience, so we start them at step three. They, as long as they're a police clerk, they're pay grade one, they just go along the steps with it, and if they would like to, you know. Become an officer, then maybe they can move up to pay grade, whatever officers is.
Right, so what happens with clerks, you have a general clerk, clerk one, clerk two, clerk three, and clerk four.
Right.
So clerk, a general clerk would be pay grade one, a general clerk. One would be pay grade two, general clerk. Three would be a pay grade. Did I do that right, three, four, so each, so they, their title would be the grade, and then they would run that all the way out, but like I said, if they were here five years and. You know, we saw that they were able to do more, take on more responsibility, okay, we'll bump them up to a general clerk two. Well, then their pay goes up, but they, they don't go all the way to the end of ten, they kind of go back just right where they are. Um, just before they get the raise.
That's like, for public work, I would kind of have, so, I kind of have, we have it for public works right now, we're proposing, they come in at one rated as a crew member. So they can either advance all the way through crew member, um, through the years, or they could get bumped up to senior crew member. Right, they bump into another grade, so instead of, it sounds like one of the changes we should make is going, instead of having like. Right now, police clerk is pay grades one through three, so that's including pays one, two, and three. And then steps one through ten of all those pay grades, that's like, that's a lot of different salary figures to choose from. So it sounds like we should, each position should get one pay grade, instead of having pay grades one through three. Just one pay grade, because.
Okay, we also need to qual- qualify what. They have to have on those. I mean, make them a pay grade, there's a reason to make it that pay grade. Uh, you know, uh, for example, if you go with, uh, the clerk. Is one pay grade and then the, uh. Or the deputy clerk is one pay grade, is that the same pay grade that you're going to give the, uh, clerk in the, uh, public safety?
You would give it.
Would that be the same?
No, it would be two different, it would be two.
It would be different.
Class, it would be two different classifications.
Right, so we need to know what the classifications are and what qualifies those classifications, I think that's what Janice was trying to get to in the first place. Yeah, that's true, all of that.
Right.
All of that, yes.
So, but while we're kind of. Talking about this, well, the police departments generally don't use this actual pay system here, they use a. Rank structure instead of pay grades, it's actual ranks and then number of years. And we also do that for the police clerk. Because you, like I said, you, you can have a police clerk want, so a police clerk is some, in just general, police clerk could be someone who's sitting. Answering the phones, doing light typing and things of that nature. A general clerk two or an administrative assistant is doing correspondences, writing letters, doing memos. Filing stuff, so there are different classifications based on what that person is doing. And so a general clerk generally doesn't stay general clerk their whole career, they usually advance up. General clerk is generally somebody who's, nobody's in here in their late twenty, I mean, early twenties, mid twenties, but as they go up in their career, they go up in different. They apply for different positions to go up into the clerk arena, so to speak, just like the deputy clerk. And the regular clerk and, uh, front desk receptionist. So those are three different classifications and three different pay scales.
So just to summarize, I, I've heard three issues that the board's talked about, one being the low rate of pay that the pay. That does, um, two being the, um, setting which positions go into what pay grade. Um, and then three, how to determine the experience and what step of the grade to bring them in on, is that correct?
Right, that's what I get.
Yes, so the first.
Yes.
The low pay, we're going to fix that by eliminating that first pay grade step one.
So, ho, 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 I would say do not eliminate it, because if we hire somebody part-time, that could be a. Part-time position pay grade salary.
Okay, so we keep that vacant, but like public works crew member, instead of being pay grade one, would become pay grade two. Right?
Yes, I mean, I would say, I would keep a pay grade one for part-time employees.
Okay.
Um, because that's on your lower scale, they're not getting a full salary, they're getting, you know, a lower salary, because they may only do twenty, thirty hours or whatever, so you want to keep a lower pay. Grade in, in your, um.
Available to you.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I would generally say those could be mainly your part-timers or someone who's coming in, um. You know, I don't know, but generally your part-time or somebody who's just helping out, you know.
Temporary employee.
Yeah, temporary, something I was looking for, temporary.
Okay, so we can make that change, that's easy, um. And then we can also look at the positions and reassign them pay grades, so that they're not having a range of pay grades, they're at one specific pay grade. I think that'll address the second concern, and then the third is experience, Chief, is there, in the federal, was there guidelines on like. New person in the position would start at step one, but if they have experience, we have, we're able to authorize up to step three or four? Or.
Yeah, it, it kind of, um, so how the federal government works is kind of a, a more of a progression. So you're not going to have a senior level person coming in at a grade two, three, or four at all. Because they're a senior level employee, so. Um, it's more when your, your general clerks all the way up to your FBI or secret service agents and all of that, your agents and those type of people are in your fifteens. And sixteens, your senior level, your directors and all of that are in your fif- fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen pay grades. But the general, um. Workers below that are where you start getting into your three to seven, um, range. So it's. It's kind of, you know, once you determine what the job is actually going to be. And how involved it's going to be is where you look at putting them on a pay grade. The experience comes in based on the steps, so. If a laborer comes in and they've been working twelve years and where they came from, they've gotten. Good evaluations. And you said, okay, well, we only have this laborer's position, okay, well, we'll bring them in as a three step three. But say the crew member leaves, well, they apply for the crew member's position. Well, they would go to a, a four step two, because see, they got a pay raise. But they actually went backwards, even though they got a pay raise, that's how that would work.
Okay, okay, okay.
And so now, even though they went backwards, they're still going to go forward each year with a raise than what they were when they originally hired.
I think where it gets confusing is you're not going forward, you're going up.
Yeah.
Right, you go, you go up and back.
Right, you go back when you go up in salary, not forward in salary.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right.
I mean.
And, and so year, you know, until your years start continuing on, and that's how people stay in the government for. You know, it's set up for thirty years, you retire at thirty years, well, what happens is it's set up so that people actually progress up the page, pay grade. As, as years go on and on, you know, they take on different positions, higher positions, and that's how their pay goes up. And they don't run necessarily out of steps over their thirty years, unless somebody just stayed in one position their whole thirty years and they'd be in a step ten. And they would just get cost of livings and that, they would have to be just fine.
My next question, Chief, so how often, so right now, I think we have it in the ordinance that they move up a step a year. For the steps one through three, so if they're brought in new, they know automatically they could get, good remarks on their, um, employee evaluations. They'll go to step two and then they'll go to step three, but then at a certain point, it starts doing.
Every three years.
Right, yeah, that, that, that is a way of the government, you know, that's what I'm saying, you don't go, you can't go straight from one to ten, because. You'll be there ten years, you still got twenty years left to do, so there are spaces in between the, um. The steps, so you'll stay in step two. For two years, you'll stay at step three, one year, step four for two years, so it's kind of staggered to get you to the thirty, so to speak.
Cause I think in here it says to get from step one to step ten, it'll take eighteen years.
You joining?
I can't get in.
Oh, that's not. Swing it around, yeah, swing it around here.
Yeah, I mean, that, that, that is. That is a possibility, and, and like I said, the way around that is the person applies for a new position that's above what they're currently doing, if the town has it. Um. And so, you know, that, that's how that works out, but yes, it is a stepped process and. What you just said about the eighteen years is actually. Fairly accurate, I mean, I can check with my wife, I mean, she, she would know it better, but there are, they're not. Every year steps, because you'd be maxed out in ten years, so there are gaps in between where you stay at the same. Step or maybe two years, but you generally get a cost of living, or sometimes they may or may not get a cost of living.
Okay, I think this is starting to make sense now with, uh.
Yeah, I think the way he did it, I mean, I'm not saying that it's wrong, I don't think it was, that the ordinance was written completely. How the chart is set up. And I think that's where the confusion.
I think we just need to clarify a few more things in the ordinance.
Yeah, I, I know I'm not talking much, I, I had to run back in, uh, the election poll, but I agree with Chief, I don't, I think the pay chart is, is fine to kind of work with. I think the wording within the ordinance doesn't really detail how we need to work with the pay chart, I don't think it aligns properly in my estimate.
And then the pay grades, each position needs to have one pay grade, not two or three to choose from, right?
Correct.
That's the other, that's always confused me, I was like, okay, so I could be in pay grade. Um. Six, but then somehow I can bump up to pay grade eight, so, okay.
So realistically, I mean, and this is something either this, before we do it, or after. For, for public works, and I'll just use public works, because the police ranks are already structured, so the police ranks are not. Equivalent to this here, so, but for, I don't know how many positions are in the actual. Um, public works department, so let's just say there's five positions before you get to. um, public works department, so let's just say there's five positions before you get to the department head. Well, all five positions need to be labeled and given a grade, so that when you actually put them in, you already know what it is, and we're not guessing, okay, well, maybe this person should be this, or this person should be that, it should already be laid out. You may not fill that position, but it could be in the organizational uh or the budget as a zero item, but you have to have the positions in there, so you'll know what grade and step, and you know, step one to three, where a range is. So if we do hire a crew leader, they know they're at step three range, step one to step three. If that makes sense.
No, I'm not really talking much, guys, um, from what I've seen as far as public works uh staffing, it's uh, if they do call it a crew member, the next step is crew member driver, and then it's uh senior crew member. And then it, it sort of breaks off into like whether your, your license classification for one, which is CDL uh crew member driver, things like that, before it actually starts to go up to senior crew member foreman and break out like that.
Yeah.
Right, so each one of those classic, each one of those job titles would have a different pay grade attached to, is what I'm saying. Now, you may not fill that position at this particular fiscal year, but you have the position available to fill if someone applies, that's qualified for it.
I'd like to ask a question, um, uh, as far as department heads go. That would, and, and what, am I right in hearing that we wanted to change um the pay grades to adjust it, so it's not a range, but just a level?
No, no, y- your grade would be, so the grade, this is used.
Let me, uh, let me take, I'm sorry, chief, but I just. When we hire our department head, now town clerk, I, I was gonna use that as an example. Um, I don't even know what pay grade level that is. I don't have my papers, I thought that was six, but it might be in a range of four to six or something. Um, if we proceed and just make it one level and we hire the, the town clerk, uh, has a lot of experience and it's step five. Pay grade six, step five, after five years, where do they go?
Well, it's not a five years, it's a lot like, not, each step isn't one year, um, like in the ordinance we have now. Steps five to, I think ten is every two or three years, you get that step. But unless, in between that, you get cost of living outside the steps.
Okay, then I'll readjust the question, what if they come in at pay grade six and they have a the most experience anybody can have, like, and they come in at step eight. And then after whatever number of years, in other words, when they get through with step ten, where do they go?
I think like chief said, they just get cost of living, unless the board adjusts the pay grade.
Okay.
Yeah, yes, so you go to.
Promotion.
Right, so. So let me say this, generally, this budget adjusts every year if necessary. So this is the FY twenty-two budget, so next year for the FY twenty-twenty-three budget, all of these numbers could go up by two percent. So this is what they're getting this year, but two years from now, this, these numbers may be totally different because the revenue has come in, people have gotten, uh, we've gotten our speed red light camera, money is coming in from everywhere, um, so the, the board decides to give the whole chart an increase. So even though they came in as a step seven, at, let's just say, five step seven, just say fifty-nine, five ninety. Two years from now, that could be sixty-four thousand dollars, just because the whole board increased the entire graph. So this is not permanent, this is not a permanent number, this number, this chart can change from year to year. If that makes sense.
Well, yeah, yeah, it does, I, I just wondered about having in the ordinance, the language that department heads um are coming in at one pay grade, not a range.
Well, the language has to be generic enough to adjust every year, understanding that a budget um, the budget charts can go up every year, or they could stay the same, they generally don't go down. You know, they usually stay where they are, or they go up. So you could have, so you could adopt, we could adopt this pay scale for two years. And so for two years, this is, this is gonna be the base pay for this chart. Well, year three, everybody, the board decides to give everybody a three percent increase based on this chart plus a one percent COLA, if that makes sense. So the pay scale, the chart itself stays the same for the entire budget cycle, but it could change the next budget cycle. It could go up, or it could stay the same. Am I making sense? Somebody shake their head, somebody say something?
It does make sense, and I think we should have it in the ordinance that it is up, it is review, it is to be reviewed at intervals, whatever intervals we choose, but it should be reviewed. It shouldn't just be as to granted that for the next ten years, we're gonna use these figures.
Right, so I know, I'll just say for the county, the county does a two-year paycheck, pay scale. And it makes it easy, because the next year, they're not trying to figure out what the numbers are, they already know what the numbers are, because they've done it for the first year and they've done it for the second year. Then the next, the year after that, they may do it for another two years, or they may do three years, depending on how the revenue is flowing. So we're deciding, I guess, in this time to do it as a one-year interval, because what it was last year is gonna change this year. So we could do it this year or two years, or we could do it for one year, I'm saying we, but I mean you all, you know. So, I mean, you know, it could, it could be a two-year budget chart, or it could be a one-year budget chart. But generally, like I said, um, next year, the person would move up a step. And if the board decides to give cost of living, they would get the cost of living, now what happens is the cost of living adjustment will adjust these numbers also, because you can't say, I'm making fifty-nine, five ninety, and I get a cost of living and it's still saying I'm making fifty-nine, five ninety, the, the chart has to, has to increase with the cost of living.
Right.
As well.
Which is what happened here, right, well, we adjusted the cost of living from pay group, from pay scale up.
Right.
Even if you were stuck in case step five, because you weren't in your year to step up, you're still getting a bump.
Right, because you got the cost of living.
Right.
So, so even if this chart stayed the same, and you all gave a cost of living this year, and you decide to give a cost of living next year, well, these numbers would jump each year, but you're still in your same step and you're, in your same grade. It's just your cost of living has gone up, because if you're in that two-year window where you don't get a step, your salary is going up, but you're still standing, you're saying pay grade and same pay step.
And that's why the charts, the chart with the actual figures is in each budget ordinance, not the personnel ordinance. So that we're not looking at the personnel ordinance every year, changing it, we can get change of the budget, so. Okay, this is starting to make a bit more sense to me at least, but there's definitely some changes we can make for our discussion next Tuesday. Okay, so the, I think we're summarized, so we'll keep pay grade one, but we're not gonna have full-time, that'll be reserved for part-time positions. We'll just start like our lowest full-time at pay grade two, correct, is that what?
Well, isn't, I'm sorry, but isn't part-time, I thought. Adjusted based on an hourly rate divided out.
That's true. Yeah, that's true, because I know, I think you dropped.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Cause I asked Will, because it's in here, it says like twenty forty and so. But I don't know that you need that lower, right?
Okay, so you said we should, like we had talked about, um, pay grade, take current pay grade one, make pay grade two, pay grade one, and then do we wanna add?
Really nice stuff, you're, you keep everything.
Two screens.
I think that, yeah, if you bump to pay grade two, you know, just because you're part-time. You know, it's not like you're, you're working at the ice cream store, like, you still should be making a salary that is the same as someone else who is working at the McDonald's.
Okay, we can make that change. We'll put everyone in one pay grade for the second issue, and then experience, we'll just kinda break it out, like depending on how many years' experience or something, we can, I guess, put some general ideas on steps.
Yeah, I think, isn't that in the job description in federal government? The steps, that level, isn't that in the actual job description?
Kyle, can you kind of repeat what Sarah's saying?
I can't, I can't hear.
I don't wanna crowd him.
What did you say? Say the little, I didn't hear.
The step, so the one thing we talked about with experience, um, with, when to bring someone in with experience at what step for their pay grade, for their position, um, she was saying that in the job description, sometimes that is broken out in the job description. So if you're coming in with ten years of experience, you qualify for step four. Um, or something like that, is that, does that sound right?
Generally, it's just a range, it doesn't have any steps, so, I mean, and the board, and to be quite honest, the board can decide based on the person's experience, what step they wanna put them in.
Okay.
So y- you could, you can generally do from one to three, but if you feel, or the board feels, hey, we wanna give this person uh four or five to make sure that they come here, then that's what you do, um. But, you know, you ultimately have to have a range, but the decision is actually made once you select the person as to what the actual experience level is.
So we could put something in there, because I, I don't think we wanna make this more complicated. So we could put something in there saying that if a person has experience, the, whoever's hiring them has the authority with, with the budget to go up to like maybe step three. But if they need to go beyond step three, they need to seek some approvals from the board or make a case or something like that.
Yeah, oh, yeah, you could do a range between one and three, any steps above three needs, you know, majority.
Okay, I, I won't keep it simple, so, okay, I think that clears, I think that addresses all three issues we had. So we'll take off pay grade one for two, did we wanna add another pay grade, um, pay grade nine, which will become pay grade eight from the federal chart, so that we still have eight pay grades, or did we wanna reduce it down to seven pay grades?
Now, I thought we were leaving it the way that it was.
What if you and Will think about that? And then advise us at the meeting.
Do we need a pay grade nine, that's the question.
That, yeah, that's.
I, so if Kyle and Will discuss it, and even if they talk to Insurity, then they can advise us at the meeting, what they think.
Yeah, we can do that, we'll talk to Insurity, get some best case stuff, and uh, and we can discuss it again next week with some, with some changes to the uh personnel ordinance.
Okay, is, is everybody pretty well understanding or the steps we're gonna do, do to get the information back to us for next week? Or are there any other questions? I think we're all thoroughly confused this time. But any, uh, I think everybody understands what we're trying to accomplish here. Okay, so going, yeah, if we could move, uh, the next, do we have one more item?
Yeah, we have the budget adjustments, um, so that's a overview, I'm doing news here.
Mr. Martin.
I am here. Sorry, I'm now, I'm outside, everyone, um, so, we ready, Kyle?
Yeah, yeah, you should be able to see the adjustments on the screen, and Will, I, I, Winford and I just highlighted the line items you changed. Uh, or that were being adjusted, just so maybe easier to break it out.
Yep, no problem, so everyone, uh, of course, as, as mentioned before, we're gonna do a uh fiscal year twenty-twenty-one uh budget adjustment. Um, as Kyle mentioned, he highlighted some of those areas that had uh some minor adjustments to them, uh, we uh, did not um spend as much money uh as anticipated based on the approved budget. So we did decrease the expenses a, a little bit, um, and we were able to, of course, unfortunately, reduce the revenues as well, um, but first, we focused on the expenses um, to bring those up to par, and then we went back up to the revenues to reduce those to com- still have a, an even um draft. No, yeah, even draft FY twenty-twenty-one uh adjustment, so you'll see the highlight areas. We reduced franchise fees uh by two thousand, uh, the most notable one is the parking meters, which was at two hundred ninety thousand. We reduced it down to one oh three, a hundred and three thousand. Uh, moving down, as Kyle mentioned, the community open space or the playground grant, uh, we anticipated to spend, to use those monies, we did not, so we're gonna carry that over into the next fiscal year, so that was zeroed out as well, um, you'll see that um, three hundred thirty-seven dollars initially was not in the grant, or sorry, in the budget, um, but we added that in there uh with the adjustment, because we did have some revenue come in with that, and I believe some expenses as well. Uh, moving on down, uh, financial corp tax, uh, that was slightly reduced and highway user revenue was slightly reduced as well. Uh, if we go down to taxes, you'll see that we uh received a little bit, quite amount more uh taxes that we anticipated uh to bring in. I did put in a call with uh Prince George's County to have them send over some remittance information from uh, I would say from November to January, there were a few deposits that we received that uh, we uh technically are trying to make sure that they're taxed this, um, and or could be a reimbursement from COVID monies. Uh, I will say this on this call that uh Prince George's County, or certain areas of the vision, may not be the easiest to work with. Uh, but I am awaiting that, that's not gonna do anything drastic to those tax numbers, um, but with those numbers were um more so increased uh just, just a little bit, uh, to compare with our actual numbers. Um, salaries and, and um, our general government salaries were reduced a little bit, again, we didn't have a higher as anticipated, uh, certain employees, or we uh hired later within the year. Uh, I made sure that we adjusted the audit numbers, the, the actual that we paid out was, I think, that was twenty-three thousand, so we bumped that up a little bit. That was for some additional services that was done by C Brown and Associates. Uh, bank charges slightly increased as well, uh, just so you all know, bank charges, a, a, a form of that is merchant transactions or merchant charges that we get from our uh parking meter vendor, uh, so they take out a service charge or administrative fee uh, for the services that they provide behind that. Uh, sorry, just going, computer software and support, uh, there were some uh upgrade, I think, small upgrades that we did uh, and or uh small upgrades and some purchases that we did for computer software and support. It might be, be things such as uh Microsoft annual subscriptions, or our domain annual subscriptions as well.
Zoom as well, Will, we did Zoom.
Oh, and Zoom, you're right.
And that was a big cost, so that's some of the other COVID-related online stuff we did.
Right, uh, as you can see, the a hundred and thirty thousand dollars was zeroed out for community open space. Again, that was kinda, that was, wanna be moved over for FY twenty-twenty-two. Uh, as, again, technology upgrades down here, there were some computers and items purchased and within this fiscal year, we had to repair, uh, for the parking meter upgrade, we had to repair a meter head as well. And annexation costs, we anticipated spending about thirty thousand thus far, about five thousand.
Well, on the annexation, uh, so we just approved the sixteen thousand dollar quote, I'm not sure when we'd actually spend that. Um, but that would like go into there, um.
Okay.
Yeah, but I'll, I'll, when I send them the form, I'll see when they anticipate finishing, because it could carry into the next fiscal year whenever they actually invoice us, but I just wanted to bring that up.
Okay, we'll talk about that one then. Um, so you can see that seven hundred eighty-one thousand for general government was anticipated to be spent, uh, so far, uh, seven hundred and fifty thousand is what we have um adjusted the budget to, uh, which. is what we have, um, adjusted the budget to, uh, which potentially could have a slight increase, uh, within the next few weeks compared to us approving this, uh, year-end budget. Going down to public safety, similar with salaries, uh, some areas of positions were not, um, I'm hired in. Um, I made sure that I, uh, you'll see a big reduction in payroll taxes, uh, with the accountants and us did. We pretty much lumped all of that into general government, uh, so that's why that number is reduced significantly. I let, made sure I left vehicle repairs and or vehicle maintenance and fuel, though we don't have those invoices in. I left it in or increased it slightly, uh, just because, um, I don't know if this is, if this really affects us. We all see fuel, the cost of fuel is going across the country, so I don't know how much that's going to affect us, uh, within these last two or three months of the year, and then also vehicle maintenance. I really don't know the cost for maintenance, um, I know our vehicles are fairly new, um, but I, I wanted to just add a little bit of cushion in there, so I did that within public safety and public works as well. You'll see that, uh, capital improvement, uh, there's an energy conservation, there was a grant, yeah, it was a grant, I'm not sure if that was the exact name of it, but, uh, that twenty-three, seven, sixty-six is for the Chevy Bolt, uh, that was just purchased, uh, within the last month. And, uh, debt service, of course, is thirty-three thousand, which is, uh, you'll also see that in the next budget, of course, for FY twenty twenty-two. So you'll see that there's a reduction of roughly about, uh, forty-five, forty-five to fifty thousand, uh, within public safety. And going down to public works, uh, not much has changed here, we actually had, I believe, a, a slight, no, it was still a slight decrease, um, in the total cost for public works, uh, did pretty much the same, uh, for the vehicle maintenance. Uh, did a slight increase there in vehicle fuel as well. And that's really it. Um, payroll taxes, again, slightly decreased because we lumped, uh, that information within general government. Um, so they still have, uh, some payroll tax information because of the fiscal year we're in. Uh, they, there's some things such as pension contributions, um, pensions and insurances in that area uh, for public works, uh, medical insurance, there, that is. So the, the new, um, adjusted budget right now, um, is going to look like it will be, uh, one billion, three hundred ninety-four thousand, seven hundred forty-nine dollars. Again, that is subject to change, uh, not a whole lot, but right now, this is the draft FY twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one year-end, uh, budget adjustment numbers.
Do we have any questions on it, for Will?
And I just put on here, Mayor, uh, the, uh, next work session agenda items to break it out, um, if anyone had any thoughts, but pretty much just discussing those three ordinances again. I do have a resolution to extend our declaration or modify the declaration, because that does expire in, uh, the end of June, so we wanted to put that on the agenda for the June town meeting. Um, but I wanted definitely to have a chance to discuss the board reports in its final form. Um, just kind of giving an update on the town clerk recruitment process, and then discussing that salary comparison and comparability, and before we go into the closed session to discuss the actual individual salaries. So I just wanted to kind of break it out while we're discussing an open meeting versus closed meeting, so if anyone has any thoughts on that for these items. We've got one vote for you.
Well, Will, can you mention the items again? I'm so sorry.
Oh, sure, for the, uh, the work session items?
Yeah, yeah.
So it's, uh, so we just have the three ordinances, so the budget amendment, um, will be discussed, and obviously not in depth with these numbers, unless something big changes, um, it's really just going over the actual legislation. Um, the legislation for the town operating, uh, budget, um, and then the legislation for the personnel standards. I think of those three, the personal standards is probably what we're going to dive the most and do based off today's conversations. Um, so hopefully we can get that. Will and I will work with Insurity, make some changes to that, uh, budget document, so that we can really look into it, um, Tuesday, and then that way we have, if there's any last minute changes, we can make that before it goes into its final form for approval in June. Um, the other item is the, uh, decorate, the resolution, discussing the draft resolution to extend the declaration of the emergency for the coronavirus, um, so just looking into different things, like possibly reopening, um, renting the meeting room, because we are getting some, some requests, and just based off the, um, uh, removing some of the parking restrictions downtown, the courthouse is fully reopened, and restaurants are, are pretty much fully reopened. Um, and just some other items like that. Okay, yeah, um, so that's, I honestly haven't touched that yet to, to start getting, those are just some topics for that declaration of emergency. But we're not approving that till the June town meeting, none of this stuff's getting approved till the June town anyways. And then just an update on the town clerk recruitment process, um, which I think we'll be sending some emails this week about anyways, with, setting up some interviews, and then, uh, just discussing the salary, um, comparison and comparability. So hopefully we'll have something from Insurity, if not, get some stuff from MML for the board to compare um, our rates versus some of the other municipalities, and obviously I'll try and break it out by, uh, maybe population sizes. But for some of those, some of those positions are pretty, like, police officer, you're still doing X type of job, there just may be more police officers, depending on the size. Um, and then that's the open meeting, and then we'll go into closed session, the board will have the chance to kind of look at the, uh, the current, the individual salaries of employees, and discuss that in that closed meeting se- session. Um, and either make some choices, or just, just discuss, that way everyone knows where, where the employees stand. Um, but that's for next Tuesday.
Yes, um, is there an update on where we are with COVID, or if the, if the, uh, the town is going to reopen? I'm just so on DC time over here with every type of DC, I'm not even on what's going on where I live, so I'm like. I, I, I have been giving that a lot of thought, and I've been talking with a, a lot of the other municipalities, some have already opened. Uh, I don't feel comfortable opening for July one. Mm-hmm. July one is a good target date. I don't, you know, that is something that, you know, I would have brought up at the, uh, meeting, um. If you have any reservation about July first, again, I think the mask mandate and the reopening, it becomes a personal choice. Everyone here in this building has been vaccinated, and, uh, we have protocols in place, uh, and those protocols will stay in place. We will still, uh, do the protocol that we always have, uh, and ha- and take, uh, someone's temperature when they come in. I don't think anybody will have a problem with that, I don't know. Uh, caution is, uh, our biggest thing. I don't want, I didn't want to open too soon. But I think July one is a comfortable date, I don't know how you feel, so if you want to say so now, just let me know, we can discuss it.
I think too, by July one, we might have more information, um, because there will be people going without masks. I also think as a mom, my kids can't all get vaccinated. Now, kids aren't running around in the town hall, so it's not an issue in town hall. But I think when we're talking about events or bigger meetings, we may have to consider masking being more of a required thing than a personal choice, because an unvaccinated adult who doesn't wear a mask and you can't rent kids, you're putting them in danger of getting sick. From, that's my perspective on it. Um, so, just something to think about when we're considering that. And Kyle's got kids too.
One so far, one, 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 one on the way, so, no.
Uh, I'd like to address something about, uh, the room rentals for the board to consider. Uh, right now, in our agreement, there is a, um, it's, again, not, not a shall, but a may, I, or in a way, but it says that normally the room is rented in the evenings during the work week. I'm not sure how we adjust the weekends, I, I don't have the form with me, but I think we need to decide as we approach reopening, if, right now, we have somebody who called today who was interested in it, uh, using the room during the day on Tuesdays or Thursdays. We need to get that door fixed. Uh, I think little signs on the door that say, uh, for personnel only, official town personnel only, may not stop people from just coming straight through. I just, I just think it needs to be, it's never been fixed. And now that we're, we're, we're going to reopen to the public and possibly rent the room out during the day, I think that's real important.
Um, what, what door was that, Dave? I'm sorry.
With, if, uh, if I went to the restroom and I'm coming back, I'm talking about coming back into the office, the two double doors. You don't need a passcode, you just push.
Uh, okay, so getting some sort of security.
Anybody on the conference side can come right through, and up to this point, we've been working with the evening rentals and putting up signs saying, do not enter for personnel only, you know, and it's kind of an honor system. But that's never been, that's never been, I know it's a headache.
That's not ideal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, that's not a headache, that is a significant cost to fix that door.
Yes, it is.
The way, the way it was set up, it was designed sort of backwards, that you can come out one way and not go in the other way. It should have been closed off both ways, so, um.
Yeah, the whole idea of doing that full design was to have a, a wing that you could, a conference wing that you could sequester off in the evening, night, weekend, whatever kind of meetings they come using another door, and not come in the admin side. Um, but I just wanted to put that out there, uh, about that, I know it's a major cost, uh. I think we have to address that, but also just mainly, I think the board needs to address that, are we being allowed during the working days? You know, rentals of that space during a workday, working hours.
Are there some other lock options, like for that door? There's some, no, I don't, I don't know.
It's the way that the door, it's the way that it was designed, so the door is designed for handicap, but there's no two-sided mechanism, it's only one-sided. When you're in the lobby going that to the bathroom, but coming from the bathroom back into the lobby, there's no way to stop anybody from doing that. Now, the only other option is, Mr. Dave, is if we put, if we close the doors in the hallway and allow them to just come in and out of the door next to where the mayor's car is. And to let them know that, okay, you asked for the room rental, so you come in the side door, or you come in that door, and you stay in the room, and then when you leave, you just leave out, you can come back around to the front and let us know that you're gone. That's the only other option, uh, to kind of keep them confined to that room, um.
But you can't keep them confined to that room, because they, they would require the use of the bathrooms.
I mean, they could use the bathroom, but I'm just saying, you know.
Once they're there, they're right by the door.
Right, unless they use the bathroom, they would stay in the room, and, you know, you just have to explain that to them to say, you know, look, the double doors to the right leading to the lobby are not authorized for your rental, just the, the door, I mean, the conference room, and back and forth to the bathroom, and that's it. Uh, it may work and it may not work, but.
If we have a, a renter who's having, uh, and they want to rent the, uh, whole facility, they cannot do that during the work day.
Right.
Definitely.
And then you might want to think about a stanchion, like you could put a stanchion in that, I mean, it's, you know, with signing. But a stanchion, stanchion does say, like, this area is all God's.
I mean, uh, but I'll tell you, I was very disappointed when we first did our grand opening and realized I'm going to have to punch in a passcode every time I want to use the restroom.
Yeah, that was not.
Yeah.
Um, chief, could we like, put a simple, from the door from our end, like in the evening, like, we wouldn't do it during, like, I don't think we should rent the room during the day for right now while we have staff in the building.
I agree.
Like, evening, put like a little latch on the door, like, some, like, almost like a gate thing that just kind of left, because it's not an emergency exit door. There are already two emergency exits out of that wing of the building, coming this way would only get you in the war.
Oh, okay.
Um, could we physically, or even like, bike lock the handles together to, you know what I mean, just, it's more of a permanent.
That was my thought, like the little.
So let me say this, I think we would have to have the fire department come, because even though there's two other ways out of the building, um, I wouldn't feel comfortable putting a lock or, you know, a latch on this side of the door, and somebody couldn't get out, and, you know.
I mean, even if there was a keypad there, they couldn't get it for, there's no, like, emergency override for a keypad, like, right now, someone would be trapped in the lobby, because they couldn't go into the police wing, they couldn't go in, they technically couldn't go, they would have to go out the double doors or that door, but.
And there is an exit door in the meeting space.
Yeah, there's an exit door.
I mean, I, I, I'm fine with it, yeah, I, I think it'll work, I just don't want to be the one to say yes, and then the county or somebody come in and say, oh, who authorized that, you know, we need to have somebody official who does that.
So we could call the fire marshal. Right, I would call the fire marshal.
Yeah, let them make that decision, so we can blame it on them.
Dave, does that sound like a fixed fear, if we could, if the fire marshal, okay, is there something we could lock on our side, so they physically could not come over here? Does that meet your?
Well, it, it sounds good, I, I actually just wanted to put it out there for the board to consider, uh, to have a little discussion. Not necessarily now, but at, at any time before the event, just to make sure we're all thinking on the same page. I haven't solved it in my mind, but what you're suggesting sounds good.
And bear in mind, the only ADA compliant door for the public is the front door. The door by my, by the mayor's office is not ADA compliant, neither are either exits.
Well, that can, we could also kind of have that as part of, for my D year ADA compliant entrance, and then you have to. But if they don't need an ADA compliant entrance, then they can use the other side. Theoretically, I think we can do that, I don't know.
And we haven't had any issues up, you know, at this point, with anybody who's rented the room, but the only door that we hit, incoming door, is the front door that is ADA compliant.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, even though.
Which is not part of the rental.
Yeah.
There's elections too happening in that room.
I.
And I think we do have a wheelchair, uh.
We do have cameras.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But. Or Will's office, which is a bigger concern, frankly. The paperwork's getting there, yeah.
Well, the, the security of this building on the inside is, it leaves a lot to be desired, am I correct, chief?
Uh, yes, I would not have, uh, approved of this design and the way that these doors are set up, because it's a.
Yeah, we've had this kind of many times.
We don't even have the right exercise in front of the right door, so.
Mm-hmm.
I think there was an original intent to have it work correctly, and then there were changes that happened, you know, uh, change orders and, you know, realities of, oh, this can only go here. And blah, 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 and said, you know, that's just unfortunate. I just wanted to add, Commissioner Franklin, if you want to sign that piece of legislation that the board just passed, it's on the copier room table. Save you a trip.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, anything else we need to discuss, because I know we've gone over, uh, our time a bit? Anybody have anything else they wish to discuss? Okay, hearing nothing, I thank you all for your time. Uh, we do have, uh, some things to get together for the next meeting. And as usual, uh, I'm sure that will all be taken care of, and we will be able to go forward at the next meeting.
All right.
Thank you. Good day.
Thank you, everybody, good day.